Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation, DCEDC. Here at the Duncanville. Six oh six. And we do have a call on the housekeeping. I'm told we have electronic amplification, so you have to speak up. This is hard for me because I have a nice little soft quiet voice. But I'll do my best. And so the meeting has been called to order. We will have an invocation by Mr. Martin Goff. And I will lead us in pledge allegiance to the United States and to the Texas flags. So that you will stand at this time.
Okay, let us pray. Let me follow, we thank you for this day for your grace, for your protection. God bless the city of Duncanville, Dallas County, and the state of Texas. We thank you for covering the residents in our neighborhoods, our businesses, the employee of the city, particularly the men and women who serve with our first responders and public safety. We invite you to reside on this meeting tonight as we consider matters specific to the economy here in Duncanville. Right, in the spirit of cooperation and discernment as we work our way through this agenda. We thank those who joined tonight, those who may be watching via YouTube on the screen. We ask you to bless them and then Christ our Redeemer. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Goff, and if you will join us, uh, with the pledge of allegiance. There we are, in three, two, one. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, my state, under God, one and indivisible. Okay, you didn't see it. Okay. First item on the agenda, citizens, public forum. Who is, who is Secretary for the Union? Okay. Do we any email comments from the public? We do not. We do not.
I'm speaking.
And if anyone would like to come and speak from the audience at this time, come forward, speak loudly, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Patricia Eber, 115 South Greenstone. And I'm going to read part of this because I want to make sure I get the numbers correctly, correct. I host paid for one-year chamber memberships for businesses. Since June 3rd, 2025, the DCEDC and the City Council have given a total to the Chamber of $44,466. Thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-six of the dollars were from hot funds that the City Council approved of June the 3rd for the Chamber's 70th anniversary. It was to pay for an E sign, power wash the building, the sidewalks, and the parking lot, and up the landscaping. Since your board, as board members, you no longer deal with the hot funds. You may not be aware of that $39,206, June 3rd. And then at your special meeting, September the 8th, you know about the 2,200 sponsorship for 9/11 remembrance or ship for Casino Night that was not held in Duncanville. And the latest Chamber 990 that shows that the Chamber is in financial distress. The 2023 has about a 17,000 K balance. There's no 2024 990 online since this afternoon. So where is that required filing? And then lastly, is the 501(c)(6) that any donation to the Chamber cannot be claimed as a deductible?
Thank you, Ms. Eber. So that brings us to the board member reports. And I would begin by saying I had a wonderful time in Italy. I think this problem carrying on. See everyone upstairs, everything must be going okay. So, thank you for doing that. And also, I am given to understand that the Chamber has the 2024 Farm 990s they have just done. However, it is not being published for the public to see. So I will, when I get with them, urge them as quickly as possible to do that for transparency's sake. So that concludes my portion of the board member reports. If any member of the board has any report to share at this time. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number three, Director's Report, Mr. Lerner.
Good evening, uh, DCEDC Board members. First of all, I want to thank you for your willingness and your willing to be here today in a special meeting, given that next week is a holiday week. With that said, I want to wish you and your family a blessed evening. Um, if you're traveling, please take good travels and take good travels back home. Uh, I am going to be passing around a memorandum from our events planner, Devin Hanley, about the upcoming holiday and park events. The, in her memo, she lays out the upcoming activities, some of the coordination. Uh, but there is also an opportunity for the Development Corporation to participate in the holiday parade. Uh, if you would like to be involved with the holiday parade, leave Devin know so we can make the proper arrangements uh, with your participation in the parade. Uh, the next thing that I'll share with you is, uh, a couple of months ago, I shared working on a business series feature. What we called it was the Champions at Work Series. And over the course of the last few months, we put together a series of videos uh, to highlight some of the businesses, with more businesses to feature and to highlight over the course of the coming months. But I wanted to take this opportunity to share with you. I've already shared with you via email, uh, this month's featured business, which is Jones Inc. Embroidery. But I wanted to share, take this opportunity to share with you that video. And moving forward, possibly share with you future featured businesses as an opportunity to showcase our champions here in the community. So without further ado, I want to share with you that, that product.
Creativity and breadth of time and fashion come together under one group at Jones Inc., a local embroidery branding hub that stitches together dreams one thread at a time.
My name is Makayla Jones, and I'm the owner of Jones Inc. Custom Embroidery and More.
But this business didn't start here. It began in 2020 in owner Makayla Jones Garage.
Jones Inc. originally was a hobby. It started in my garage November 2020 during the pandemic. Um, just bought a cricket and was making t-shirts, t-shirt requests. Then we looked into getting an embroidery machine.
Owner Makayla Jones, this business is more than just a branding hub. It's a tribute to her late cousin Daniel Jones, whose creativity and encouragement helped spark her journey.
Jones originally traveled around the world before traveling around the metroplex. Um, one of my original number one fans, my late cousin Daniel Jones, a true inspiration of why Jones Inc. exists. I created everything he had his own clothing line, Three Life. And he wanted shirts, joggers, socks, whatever I could make, he wanted it. And he wanted to wear that while he was on tour with artists such as Jim Jackson, J.R.A., and more, many more. Although he's not here with us anymore, he's still, um, I can still hear him, pushing, go, go, go. Um, why not you, why not me? So he is the constant reminder, the constant motivation of why I do, why I do.
What began as a side hobby has turned into a family business, a branding studio that helps businesses across the metroplex bring their ideas to life.
Jones Inc. is a branding hub for other small businesses. There is a lot that we collab with, with other business owners, just as simple as having one of my friend business, like creating for their restaurant or, you know, couple of merch ideas for their gift shops.
Makayla's moved to Duncanville happily unexpectedly, and she is operating her business here since.
We were just dropped by Alasan in the current, uh, on Main Street, which is directly next door to where we are now. And it was an easy walk through. We loved it and pretty much, at least the next day, we just fell into Duncanville. And it's been a joy ever since.
Since opening, Jones Inc. established itself as a trusted Main Street business and valued part of the local community.
Counter right here used to be fathered by, it used to be her and her mom. And as it got busier, every time, man, there are a few more people here. They do incredible service. Their monogramming is very precise, which I love. Well, she's always been extremely creative, which is what caught my eye. The first time I walked by, they have a variety of products, excellent wondings that I buy as gifts. I love her saying, do good, and good will come to you.
So that is a featured business. Remember, uh, last week, we actually about, we didn't have to go. We were out in Kim and Jen's Cafe. We go to their new locations, well, that's going to be December, uh, featured business. With more, more videos to follow. And it's been a pleasure and a real joy to kind of work with these business owners to, uh, understand and learn about their story. Because every business has its, has a story and every business has it somehow, some ties to the community and a reach, as I said, beyond the DMW area. So it's been very interesting to speak with these business owners and find out about their story, their ties to the community, and their reach beyond, uh, the DMW. So we're going to want to make sure that we highlight that in our videos. So there's more to come. Uh, that's all I have to share this evening. Thank you.
We produced a video.
Uh, that's produced in-house by our, uh, our IT team, excuse me, not our IT team, Francisco. So he faces department. So we produced a series of videos for the city and a lot of our social media materials. That's all done in-house.
Is all that, including uploading?
Yes, yes, filming, editing, it's all his, his work. We select the business and we assist with the questions. We've allowed their maybe assistance with capturing maybe certain aspects of the business. But he puts that all together. That is all his work.
Thank you, they don't produce stuff, especially.
He does very good every day. Yes.
Where were these videos from, Hannah?
These? Uh, no, it's a good question. So these videos are highlighted on the city, on the various city's social media. As well as our, um, DCEDC page.
On the landing page or website, you see something about them that we've already, uh, did.
As well as our economic development webpage. Go to see this.
This is, so this is number three, I think?
This is one, it's a number three. Yes, we're working on four right now. Francisco is editing, uh, number four. And hopefully, uh, in the next two weeks, it's going to roll out with, with that one for Kim and Jen's.
Okay. Let's see. That brings us to agenda item number five, which is public hearings. In Ohio, we're going to agenda item six. Briefings and presentations, laws of action on development will take place on these items. Six A Design Incentive Grant Program, I'll read to you in-person session, update, staff.
Good evening, President Harvey and DCEDC's board and staff, visitors. Thank you for joining us tonight. Um, so I, Marcel Perez, Economic Development Coordinator, be presenting on the Design Incentive Grant Program Updates. Really just reiterating some of the plans that were already put in motion once the board approved the revisions to the policy. Uh, what was created is a, a handout or easy reference for applicants. Come applicant open date on December the 1st. Um, so I created a calendar guidelines as an easy reference that will explain the Design Incentive Grant Program, outline the evaluation criteria for application. Uh, it will also, it does also include a checklist of all required documents and attachments. And that is in your staff report, uh, the draft. I will note that there were a few edits that were made after, um, the item, the file was included in your packet. Did a few minor adjustments to the wording and semantics, uh, but nothing major. But above all, we just would like to inform the public, primarily the business community, of the application process and help assist them throughout, um, and better understand what it's for, what the funding is for, what it's intended for, and how they can apply. So with that, on our economic development webpage, we will have the application, which will be 100% online this year and going forward. And this is just to better assist with processing and efficiency. And it will be a mechanism which, with which we can upload the information directly into our CRM for our economic development business database system. So that way it has, um, the information, the grant application, it will be directly tied to the business profile in our system. And we can also update anything with, um, in regards to communication with the applicant and in business visits, all that blue dot system that we have talked about previously rolling out. Uh, the grant application will be uploaded directly into that system as a part of this initiative. So, once the go-live date, December 1st hits, the application will be live on our webpage, um, along with some templates. The guidelines will be one document, and then we will have templates available for applicants if they don't have a marketing plan already in place, and or maybe they don't know what one looks like. Um, I have pulled templates from SCORE, which is a national, uh, small business resource organization. So there will, they have step-by-step guide business plan and for marketing plan. It asks questions, it helps really guide the, get through that process if they need to create one. And they can also upload those documents as part of the application instead of having to recreate something else. Um, I will note, in addition to the standard questions that we had in the application, which you were provided and which you also approved as part of the revisions, the application itself, as far as the questions that we asked. Um, I have, I'm planning to ask the applicants to write up a short bio or essay on giving us some background of their story and helping us provide more, um, impact and also more information to you all as a board to hopefully just make the application more comprehensive and giving that background of who they are, what their business is, and just learning more about them in general. Um, I will be hosting information sessions this week, actually. Um, tomorrow morning is the first, um, they will be hosted at City Hall and Councilors. We had, um, I'm sorry, excuse the edit, it's 7:30 a.m. Um, tomorrow morning for an early session for those businesses that are open early or that need to get in before business opens. Um, and then an evening session on Thursday at 6:00 p.m. And staff will be available to answer questions. Um, again, the, the whole purpose of the information sessions is just to give the public an opportunity to come and learn all about the program. Um, we require what, um, projects are eligible and the process and the fact that it is a reimbursement program. And just outline some of those, those key factors and guidelines. And in addition, um, so we do plan to continue marketing and promotions beyond the application starting, just to continue informing applicants in the business community of, um, the fact that the application window will remain open until March 1st, 2026. So there, um, there will be that opportunity. If they don't get in way, they will still have the opportunity to, um, fill their application and submit it until that time. And also, depending on the feedback that we receive from the community, if we feel that there's enough demand to need to host another session, we will consider that as well. That way we can have another in-person session or possibly virtual, um, again, for the community to attend, ask questions, and make ourselves available to help everyone who's interested along with us. Okay, any questions?
So just to reiterate, if any one of us or any member of the public has questions about the revised guidelines, they are on the website.
They will be.
They will?
Yes, sir. Yes, I'm sorry.
No, and if anyone has any questions, they can contact at whatever the number is.
Yes, sir. On the, um, economic development, the local, specifically the local incentives page, where we will upload the guidelines, it's a easier, it's meant to be an easier read document than referencing the policy outright. However, we will also make the policy available for download for anyone who wants to, um, access the policy as well. But the, the guidelines has the checklist, so it, it tended to be something they can download, write on, make notes. And then, you know, if they want to manually check out those items on the checklist, that will all be live and ready to go on December 1st. Yes, sir.
If they have uploads, will they have to do it or will they bring it to the city and let the city upload?
It will be as part of the application. So they'll, they'll just upload it directly to attach and get to their application.
So they'll need some sort of computer access?
Yes, yes.
For these applications, does it pass well on these positions or is there score and criteria associated?
You know, that is a great question. Um, so at minimum, they have to meet the eligibility and the criteria. Um, the participation requirements that were within the policy are on the guidelines and as well as I'll be presenting on that. Um, so that, that will kind of be the minimum determining factor. And then going forward, that is something as staff we have discussed is developing some type of scoring them that will help us to better evaluate, um, based on the evaluation criteria that is shared. Um, but that yes, we'll make that whole.
Any other questions, sponsors?
I was just, I don't know what you said, there was going to be a phase or like a open set entry or something like that. And you may consider giving some guidance, like, uh, probably getting executive zone and some, some guidance as to what you want in that space. Cause some of, you know, I mean, I just think that, so I'm not telling you the story. Everybody may not have or may not, that may not be their thing. But if you're saying executive summer, you can say that contains bam, 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 what we do, who you are. That kind of, yeah, that kind of gives everybody the same kind of, you know, box with their private, you know, word or whatever people.
Okay, are there any other questions? Thank you so much. So, this is, uh, this is your action requirement. So that moves us to section number seven of the business, 7A, discussion and House Board Action. On the welcome to Duncanville Business Forum, who DCEDC sponsored ribbon cuttings and funding for a one-year Chamber of Commerce membership for new Duncanville business staff.
Move again. So I just want to welcome for a get started, uh, current Chamber Chairman Josh Toto and Executive Assistant Peter DeMara. They have one next time.
She's actually our executive director of the organization.
Oh, okay. Thank you, my apologies, executive director.
Okay, you didn't have to throw executives, falsely.
Yes, so they will be available for any questions that the org may have. So this, uh, item is being presented tonight, again, for discussion and for more consideration um, to establish a program welcoming new businesses to the community by coordinating ribbon cutting ceremonies and funding their one-year Chamber of Commerce membership for eligible businesses and those also, I might add, those that are interested. We won't be forcing anyone by any means to join. It will be offered as benefit, um, an extension, again, as a welcome to the community on behalf of the DCEDC if we so choose, um, that will fall under the Business Retention and Extinction Program. So, um, again, the purpose is just to have something that's structured to welcome new businesses. And I will add that the ribbon cutting ceremonies, of course, will happen on their own. Um, the intention, there was already, um, inclusion of this initiative in the strategic plan for the DCEDC to host ribbon cuttings. Um, we just thought that it would be something nice to be able to add on that benefit. If we will be coordinating both types of events to offer those to the businesses. If they're new, maybe it's a new business owner to the community and they're not familiar with Duncanville. Um, it would just be another way, hopefully, extend the marketing networking arm as well for them to welcome other businesses, to connect with them and help build partnerships. But, um, currently, the ribbon cuttings primarily, um, have been coordinated uniformly. But we're just, again, looking to just put some structure to it. And, um, we would like, the, the proposal is to jointly manage the initiative with the DCEDC and the Chamber. Um, just, again, if the business chooses to move forward with and they want to take the offer of the, the one-year membership, then we could then have that over to the Chamber to coordinate and manage. And then from that point forward, you know, say year two, three, four, then it'd be up to the business to renew if they, so choose, if they want to continue that, um, that membership. But, um, under this program, we also plan, uh, which had been done in the past, that with the change of some of the systems within the city, um, it, the process changed a little bit, but we would like to go back to obtaining sort of, uh, reports, primarily monthly reporting on certificate, new certificates of occupants and, um, giving us the ability to know exactly what new businesses are coming, or maybe a business that has moved or changed locations, to just go out and visit them, um, and make that contact and then ask, you know, if you're sitting in a ribbon cutting or grand opening, again, to just further support the business and, um, help their, the growth and sustainability of their business here in the community. Um, but again, it will be to their preference. Don't force anyone, it will just be extended as, as a benefit and a welcome. And thank you for joining the Duncanville Business Community. Um, but the primary focus again is just to establish an early relationship with the business and hopefully that connection to the city and the DCEDC. As we've heard in the past, that sometimes businesses don't always feel welcomed or they don't feel that they know who exactly to contact or, um, ask for help. So this is just something to, again, formalize that, provide them those resources and let them know that. You're putting a face to the assistance that, that's offered in the city, um, as staff. Okay, sorry. Um, I will add, the proposal based on the staff report provided to you all in the packet is to provide a complimentary one-year membership to the Chamber that would be paid by the DCEDC for each eligible new business in Duncanville. And also, shout out.
Whenever you're finished, I just wanted to know if I would have opportunity to, to add, just from the Chamber's perspective?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Um, then we would also offer Then we would also offer the service of coordinating a ribbon cutting with the business, the Chamber, and the city, and establish a first point of contact between the DCEDC and the business. And also, following up with a plan to connect with that business within a sixty to ninety day window to just identify any additional needs or resources that might be needed. And, yes, Joshua?
Sure. Josh Tibido. My residence address is Eight Country Club, Fort Antigo, Texas. I'm a local State Farm agent. My office is actually right across the street, so pretty easy for me to get here. For those of you who, you know, don't have regular conversations with me, I have served as, I've been a Chamber member as a business since 2017 when I opened. And last year, I served as our first vice chair of our, our executive board. This year, I serve as our, you know, head chair. And I, I will say this, a lot of the things that the Chamber has done for our business owners in the community, I feel like it's, it goes unnoticed because a lot of it is done through individual members. It's not always brought to the surface as the Chamber did it. And if I'm being honest, it's because a lot of times, the Chamber itself is an entity to do it. It's always been the membership, okay? And I think that that's what makes our organization great, but it also puts us in a situation where, from a leadership level, our organization is not stewarding our resources the way that it should have, okay? And I'm going to lead with that because one of the statements that was made in video, or I think Victor said it, you know, every business has a story. And I know we don't have time for me to tell Chamber's story to you, but I, I will give you this snippet. This proposal is not something that I came to you and asked for or begged for, it's something that I was actually approached with. And I have to say, I love the level of support that I've received from you guys. What I would say is that in regard to anything else that has been offered or has been requested of you from a financial basis, I, I just ask that we, we move on from that because a lot of those things were requested of you that were turned in. They weren't necessarily something that I was coming to you with. And the reason why that's different is because as the board chairman, who is likely to serve an additional term, meaning I can see anything that we set in motion now, I can see those things at. Appointing Hilda as our, our director, that was one piece of that where I wanted to have some consistency in our leadership, you know, on our base of the, of the organization. But also, I needed somebody that was able to sort of stand, stand by my side as we rebrand our organization, okay? What does that mean? That mean, you know, different colors or logo? It means, what do we want to be known for? And I will tell you that in first vice chair last year, I initiated a program where we would sort of onboard our Chamber members. It worked great for a bit, and we didn't have mutual members. And I'll be honest, getting the renewal of the membership is not difficult for us. Now, again, they may not see that on an organizational level, but the way that our board and the way that our membership steps in to provide more money and revenue to these businesses because we all shop from each other, that's huge, okay? But knowing that we don't have a challenge of getting that renewal in the one year, you know, why is my membership program not helping? Why is it not helping to grow the organization? Why is it not providing more value? You know, it's because we didn't know when businesses were coming to town. We had a situation that Steve Martin and somebody from the city, I'm not sure, they would coordinate where he would get the certificate of occupancies. That's all we need, right? We could knock doors and say, hey, how you doing? We've not received any of those since the system updates, and so, you know, we're a little bit, you know, flying. We have to go drive to the town and see what's going on. Well, knowing that the city wants to step into that space of welcoming the new business and having the ribbon cuttings, you know, with the changes we've had in our organization and the lack of new members, I, I say, who am I to stand in, in, in the way of that, right? Why would I fight that? We have the resources, we have the people. We did a ribbon cutting a month back, and me and Patrick Harvey were the only two to show up. I called my office and said, hey, you guys shut the doors, I need bodies here, okay? Unfortunately, that business is not open today, and that was a month ago, okay? And so, my point in mentioning that to the board is that I want to be in partnership with you, and offering up the membership, I don't truly believe that that brings benefit to the Chamber organization at all. What it does do is it takes a brand-new business owner that can't comprehend the idea of spending three hundred dollars, and then I got a volunteer mind, I'm not going to show up, or I'm not going to get anybody to know that I'm here? That's really difficult for them to do. So I know that if they can just get onboard and get that ribbon cutting for free, whether it be for me or the city, they've already got their foot in the, now we can step in and roll out my new member onboarding. I can find out what's important to them, find out maybe where they're getting stuck. Do they have experience in the things they need to have experience in, like if they maybe need an updated sign, or they need some grant money? Hey, I, I know that space, let me help you, and I can lay that up to the board so that that new business owner can come to you one time with everything that's required of them as opposed to having it be six or seven times, okay? The Chamber's should be doing things like that for the new businesses, but I'll tell you that in my experience over the last twelve months, we don't know that these businesses have come to town, okay? And I will tell you that right now, and this is probably more than I should share, but I don't have the involvement and the engagement of my other board members to really do this on my own. So, me partnering with you on this welcome committee, sounds like something that we should have been doing, it's probably right. But just know that for the Chamber to step back and let someone else engage in that and lead that, that, that task, that's really difficult for us because historically, see that business owner say, hey, we got to get you set up, they pay that, right? Like it says, they would pay for that ribbon cutting. The problem is, is I think that we were under-delivered. And so, if I'm willing to admit that weakness of our organization, all it's being recorded, then I just ask that you see that and understand that this is not the Chamber, this is not Josh Tibido asking for a handout, this is Josh Tibido asking for a partnership that gets better time, and this is Josh Tibido asking and, and supporting the offer that Victor made to, let's get rid of that objection. If a brand-new business owner is worried about three hundred dollars, but that could bring great value and exposure to their vision, let's get rid of it, okay? So, my point being that three hundred dollar, three hundred fifty dollar membership, that is not something that we are taking lightly. If you're willing to support that new business owner, please make that decision on the fact that you're supporting a business owner. Because if I'm doing my part to recruit that business and keep them involved and make them a part of the city, just understand that the organization that I'm representing, they did that for me eight years ago. I'm the guy that most people see in the background doing the work, and most of them would be shocked to know that I'm not from Duncanville. But I care and love about this city just as much as anyone of y'all. So, if the Duncanville Chamber can do that to me, and that's what the city can squeeze out of me in terms of my commitment, we need the opportunity to keep doing that, okay? But just know that this is something that I see as a partnership that is important to reach more business owners. Depending on you right now, our biggest hurdle is getting the person that just opened up a month ago to, to just let go of that three hundred dollars because they don't know if they're going to get their next sale in five minutes or in five weeks, right? But if we can show them importance in that we, hey, look, we'll bring you in under our wing, tell me what you need. Not only can I bring customers, but I can help you know what questions to ask and what ways that you can get the city to engage in your business. So, again, just, just understand that. If y'all have questions, y'all all know how to get in touch with me, either the Chamber or right across the street, please, please, please. Don't let this be the last time that we talk about this because I, I promise you, this is not the first conversation I've had, and it won't be the last, about how can the Chamber steward our resources better than we have in the past because of the fact that not only we've been trying to brand, but we've got leadership that I like to say is, is maybe more coachable. My employees hate when I say that out loud, but I want to be coachable. But, but I mean that when I, when I put this to you guys, that, that we are a more coachable organization today than we have been, and whatever this turns into from here, we'll, we'll take your lead, okay? So, thank y'all for letting me be here. It's twice the twenty twenty minutes. Try to get some ice with you on that.
I wanted to figure that on what was just said. Behind the scenes, there have been conversations going on, and a lot of conversations involve me. I've worked with cities in Louisiana and Texas for forty years of my life. And one thing, one impediment I've noticed to the success of cities, which surprisingly is not talked about a lot, and that is different departments operating in silos. You can really see it with the large cities. I spent eight and a half years working with the, with the City of Dallas, and I was working with their utilities, and it was like Dallas Water Utilities was the department, and all the other departments might as well have been Russians at that time. Because we are not here to work with them, we are here to work with our customers, that's where we, and you, you have to move heaven and earth. If isolation, if silence gets entrenched, you have to move heaven and earth in order to get the simple of things done. Both organizations that I see are going to transition. Sit back and think about it for a moment, it's true. So, transition presents opportunity, it presents change. Sometimes, change can appear apprehensive. But, that same change also prevents an opportunity, if we are willing to take on the challenges and look at things differently than maybe we looked at them in the past. So, I am hoping, and this will be the first time I say it publicly, I am hoping that our two organizations can work together and really focus on business advocacy. One thing our city is known for, and if you ask people, they'll tell you, if you ask us, we'll tell you, you know, Duncanville is unfriendly to business, it's hard to start a business there. Well, yeah, so, so let's change that, okay? We're in a transition, and we have an opportunity to change that, so let's change it. Let's become business advocates. That's a novel idea. Why don't we do that? How can we do that? Well, first, by communicating with each other. What are you doing? What are you, what are you interested in? Type thing. And then build, build on those conversations, a program that will make a difference in operations of small businesses throughout this community. So in addition to be City of Champions, we can be City of Champions for business. You don't have to exercise a lot of ways to do that. Just do things differently and work together. So, I support this, obviously. And so I wanted to let you all know that publicly. Thank you.
Can I ask Masilda to introduce herself, and give us a little, a little group, your arm, what your role is going to be?
I like this guy.
Sorry to interrupt you on the bus, but I'd be real quick to know who your arm is.
Hi, I'm Elmer Coven, I'm, I've been working for the past ten years, and with a dental malone, I see a lot of businesses. Some have grown, some have, you know, business people, but I'm here to help and see what we can do for better businesses. I believe that we're just not here to take your money and network and stuff like that. I believe we're here to actually help the businesses as if they run between palms with other businesses who are going to spend that for the, for the, so, that's what we've been for, a great person behind me, so it's going to be, don't worry about it. So, that's very good. Thank you.
Okay, so I will turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, question?
Go ahead.
You go ahead.
So, so my question was about the ribbon cutter cutting. So we already have that in the budget, is that a different budget, different thing, or how does that work?
It's not a different budget. We, essentially, the line item for the Chamber memberships would be in the budget, we would work it in to the, and that was going to reference in moving down to the staff report on page two, the budget line item would come out toward the Chamber of membership, would come out of our marketing for business retention and expansion efforts.
Let's answer your question exactly as we do. We programmed funding for ribbon cuttings, groundbreaking ceremonies, anyway, again, as part of our, what we feel was going to be the fruit of our business recruitment and attraction efforts. And so, there was always going to be that overlap, but we looked at as example, okay, we've got funding, do it. We weren't necessarily insisting upon whether or not the city, the rich logo, or the corporation, or the Chamber did it. We, we knew we wanted to program funding, right, specific for that type of activity. And so that's what you see it include already in the budget that you just adopted in September of this year.
So these four events are different, or are they the same?
I mean, what you referred to when you said four events?
It lists up four.
It says?
It lists up four, up to four, yes. And we had allocated a larger dollar amount, just depending on, again, if it, we were planning ahead to primarily focus the ribbon cuttings for our larger organizations, that, as a form of incentivizing them or supporting them, but taking into account that there might be a need for refreshments and types of things. Whereas, if we kind of approach it in a different way and we really spread the wealth, so to speak, for small businesses, we could make that reach go further, really looking at the costs to be primarily ribbon, anything, but marketing, social media, you know, that's free, so we're going to try to go about it the best way possible. It would primarily be, the amount that we as staff were recommending is three thousand dollars, so it would be offering the Chamber memberships to new businesses up to dollars unless the board wanted to do otherwise.
I think, I think the shift from the Chamber is three hundred, isn't it, right?
Correct.
Just a question on the, I, I know that there's a lot of discussion about ribbon cutting and the, you know, the, the membership that come along with that. As far as this, you know, this, this welcome program, has there been any talk about what that involves past the ribbon cutting? Is there, like, I know something that we talk to our new businesses about, like a website review, you know, hey, have you got all your ducks in the road with your Google page? It's just some, some development for the business owner to make sure that they've done those steps. Is there any discussion with this welcome program like that? Or would that be an opportunity for the Chamber to step in and say, hey, okay? I just want, mostly I want to know if there be any part of this where we're, we step in and do something that you've already talked to them about and vice versa, right? Because that's what this program would be meant to, to, let's get away from that, right? Because if you have a ribbon cutting in this business, and then we go down the street a day later, and you have a different ribbon cutting, you know, that, that's all I'm just trying to see.
Right.
Talk through that, okay?
So, and I think ideally, and this is me personally speaking because I've dealt with both the small business side and with working with pre-chambers, ideally, we want to do ribbon cutting once the business is just a little bit established. Because it's, it's a lot for a small business to open, be ready for the public, go through their trials and tribulations, do as far as work through those kinks. So ideally, I would like to see us maybe waiting a little bit, reaching out to the business, then setting a date for ribbon cutting, again, but it's all they so choose. We don't want to pressure anyone, and the ribbon cutting would be separate. And the ribbon cutting would be separate from the chamber membership. We as the city would extend that ribbon cutting as a service, but then again, asking the business if they would like to also join. If the DCEDC would like to sponsor that, they would offer, extend that as a benefit, but it wouldn't be a requirement. The ribbon cutting is just solely offered as a benefit to them on behalf of the city and the DEDC. Which would be, but it'd be two separate things. We just since this, the expense for the chamber membership would be new to the budget, that's what we would need your approval for.
How did you develop the group that's to the businesses?
We just, as a starter, or
average of ours in the business.
Or pilot or.
Yeah, we, because this is a, a new program, we just have put some seed money in, three thousand and then in a month, we reevaluate the progress, right? What work, what take, what additional adjustments? As you may recall, the departments as a whole is committed to doing sixty business, this is purposeful here. So when we started having this conversation, this is in part maybe a, a small extension of our business expansion and retention program. We're already having, but we're committed to doing these business businesses. So what we felt was it would be best to very early on in this business, it's like, we just take you up. If we connect it as soon as possible with them as a website, hey, thank you for liking the community. Can you give us any feedback on the process? What did you like? What didn't you like? And we're here to support you. And by the way, as Masilda said, have this, when the dust settles, when you're we can offer you this ribbon cutting ceremony, but you don't have to take it. Cause I was, I was sharing with myself, there's some businesses that say, hey, I appreciate it. I would just rather do life all by myself. I don't like that kind of thing. And that's fine. We put that as an option. Also, we offer this feature, if you want this service up here as a welcome, appreciate you and thank you for investing in the community and committing to the community. We offer you one year membership to the chamber where they have several programs, several resources that may be of value to you. And then we kind of tee them up and introduce them to the chamber. But again, that's, we don't, we won't obligate an individual. If an, if an individual business owner wants to take us up on that offer, then great. If they don't, we at least put it out there. And try to make that connection and get them further involved, business community and just rooted with us. That was the thought on some of the line behind, uh, this program. And again, this is just, if it's a start, we'll evaluate if the if the board is okay with, uh, pursuing this, we'll start, we'll work it and we'll come back and report to you how it's done and if we need to make adjustments in this program.
Can you give us the benefits?
The chamber benefits for memberships?
Uh, we, we can have this sent to you. We're actually, that's one of the things we're just trying to, you know, kind of revamp. But I can pull up the existing document and I can have that emailed to you. I'll get it tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And I will add again, this was being introduced for discussion and just to kind of get your initial feedback and input on this program. And we can definitely, based on your feedback, uh, stop as you wish and, you know, maybe tweak some things, but again, I know that there was mention on the agenda of taking action, but I would strongly just begin advise that we discuss and, and give us the board an opportunity to think about it and then we could revisit at a future date. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So the, um, membership, the chamber membership calls, it range, it includes a range here, it's a number of states, so that's it's definitely a set number and not a tiered membership based upon size of business or whatever. Can you hit some clarification on that?
Josh, can you?
I didn't hear your question.
The chamber membership listed in the, um, stat report, it has a range from three hundred to six hundred. Is it a set membership? Uh, so we, we
and again, I'm, I'm, I'm learning as I go, right? Uh, right now, every membership that is on our, on our, uh, our list, I've and again, you would expect it, everybody's at three hundred. Nobody's at the higher, not even like methods or anything, okay?
So smaller businesses, there are twenty employees, that's three hundred dollars. Anything above that, like hospitals, anything bigger, that's six hundred.
Yeah.
So there's tiers.
There, there is tiers and, uh, you know, I, I don't know that, uh, I, well, I wasn't involved in, you know, discussing how they arrived at that total amount for the year. But just for context, in two thousand twenty-four, we had about seventy-four hundred dollars and so we've been seventy-three hundred dollars, but you know, round about seven thousand dollars in new memberships that were logged as revenue for that year, okay? And so you figure that is not just new businesses though. A lot of what grew in our membership in twenty-four was businesses that were already opened and signed up. And so if that helps at all from a contextual standpoint, three thousand dollars for brand new businesses, right? Because this doesn't sound like this is a brand for a business that's been in Duncanville for ten years and has just never been a member, right? This is, that's, that's for us to pursue in our, you're talking about just new businesses. So, you know, three thousand dollars, however they arrived at that might be, you know, a comparable figure if, if that helps at all.
One last comment. Um, if this board decides to move forward with this, whether tonight or in a future board action, one thing I would request is just some comments back. So, um, we would ask for the chamber to report back as far as if those businesses, three new memberships to follow in the year, probably more metrics. Second one is just the engagement of those, of those businesses within the chamber as well. And actually losing those benefits and the program will be a known home metrics I would like to see come to the board.
Appreciate it.
I have a couple of questions. Our annual chamber request for the casino night, various things that we support, that's gonna continue for the most part? And this would be a program to continue to expand on what we're committing to the chamber? Is that correct?
Uh, this is a separate, this is a separate program direct towards the business, towards the business, the new business. As part of, that is a separate, that would be a separate request.
So it's in addition to what we're traditionally supporting in the past, continue those as we've done in the past?
As they come, as a request come in.
So is there magnitude of new services that lack, that's, for your, do you know that?
They vary. Um, personally, right now, because of the changing system, we, we don't access to that data, but that's something that we wanna give back to with, with a new system that we're going to and provide the reporting that had been previously provided to the DCEC. Get back to that and write it on a regular basis. So the shortness, I don't have that information.
Good work.
Yes.
And, um, the assignments or commitments from who goes to the ribbon cutting ceremony for the city? I've always been confused about that.
Who from the city right now?
Supposedly the mayor or councilperson or?
Right now, it's been our experience that it's the economic development staff that go when we receive the invitation from uh, the chamber distance, then we would take the lead and we would invite, uh, a lot of officials, several, uh, boards and commission members, basically city officials to partake in this ribbon cutting ceremony as well as invite the chamber to be part of this grant and this welcome.
Because I would think that if you're a town member or and there's new business in your district, people like to know about that.
Sure.
And that law judge and mayor, we have to get all across the city.
It was the one who would send that correspondence out, so that she may be able to answer that question a little better as well.
I usually like to reach out to like the city mayor, the congressman, person of that district and try to reach out to them to come and support them because some of them, businesses like to have like the city mayor or somebody there that's supporting.
And councilmembers can make it.
It's maybe just the mayor that, at least the ones that we posted, I'm not sure what one y'all have, but it's typically just the mayor.
And, and those all speak. So those have been primarily when they're hosted by the chamber because there's a business joining. So in that sense, communication isn't coming from city staff. We will attend if we're aware. But with this initiative, my plan and focus would be to have some leeway time for communication. And also especially has you as a board have for us, it's nice to know ahead of time when something is coming up so that you can plan accordingly. So if we try to rush this and that's why I said, we try to rush as soon as the business opens and we can hurry and do this, then it's just, it's not gonna work the way we intend. So and also give time for planning and so that they can have the full support.
Yes, I, I, I know I'm, I'm speaking up a lot, but I, I just, I, I wanna make sure that you guys are hearing from us and you're considering this. And I would just like to add and do the last thing, unless y'all continue discussion, kind of my assumptions. Uh, the, the, the only last thing that I would like to say in regard to, uh, he asked a question about, you know, commitments to the chamber or things that you're supporting, not supporting, I, I would just like to add this because I know that up until a few months ago, y'all had never seen me represent the organization in any meetings, okay? And all that I would like to add is if I'm here, it's because it's something that I feel very strongly about, like this new initiative that, uh, EBC is, is proposing. And if there is an opportunity for sponsorships at an event that we're having, I personally see that you sponsoring a table at one of our events, even though you've done it and we appreciate it. I've never asked you for those. That has been other leadership in our organization. And whatever made you feel led to support that and write that check or show up to that event, I don't wanna discount that or disrespect that at all. But I will tell you that I would gladly give up your name in a table at an event in the future if it meant we could do something like for businesses to unfold. And, and, and take that for what it's worth. Please don't take that as me being disrespectful. I, I just would gladly give up a sponsorship that I don't feel is bringing value to our community or our chamber members. I, I, I would much rather you put more emphasis or thought into provoking a sponsorship if that was something that was in the way of this initiative. But thank you for everything that you have done. Just know that that's for my sake. I think we need to have conversations about these types of things when we're talking about money. The rest of it, if it's in the budget, wanna show up, great. If you wanna individually, come, great. But this is what belongs in these meetings, not a sponsorship. And I'm sorry if the chamber put that responsibility on you in the past because we shouldn't have. Thank you.
Yes, okay. So to, um, wrap things up, again, the recommendation from staff is just to get your back and interest levels to see if you would like us to continue formalizing this program. Um, if there's anything specifically, we'll take back what you mentioned already. Um, but if there's anything else specifically that you want us to look at, bring it back at a future meeting. Thank you.
Uh, I don't hear or say anything specific. So like I said a few minutes ago, we'll just
Okay.
And as soon as, soon as we have something to say to the board, I, I will say.
So the consensus is to, yes, to keep looking to the program from the board? Yes? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to seven P, I believe. There is a decision. Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, DCEDC Board Member Business Business Ambassador Business Program. Good morning, gentlemen.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Okay, so pretend or imagine that we haven't been talking about engagement with our local businesses, either through like formal partnerships with organizations like the Chamber of Commerce, the Duncanville Community Economic Development Corporation, like we hadn't been talking about the importance of engagement, interfacing, welcoming, stewarding our locals, right? This particular agenda item is a continuation of the conversation that we started, um, a little over a month ago. So Mr. Moreira talked about our strategic, right? Our goals as the partner. Some of the things we're doing around this strategy of business retention and expansion. What that looks like is physically moving our feet in the community, right? Visiting with these local shops, merchants, companies, large or small, right? And so as a staff, we've already been doing that, both this fiscal year that we completed and already as we started the first month or so of this current fiscal year. Making intentional targeted business visits to local companies in the community. When we started talking about this a couple of months ago was how can we involve our boards, uh, specifically the DCEDC along the exercise. Um, sometimes whether it's coal plants, neighborhood services or staff, and they see us, they see the ID. We may have follow on, it's like, okay, it's the city, what do they want, right? Um, I found myself visiting businesses during the day, during the week, during the weekend, cause I had the pleasure of living in this great city. But this was about an opportunity for the board to create some additional touchback to those businesses. A friendly face beyond city staff, right? Who may or may not be there to engage in official, official business, right? So we brought up this program as an effort to start managing involving the board in some of the activities that the staff will continue to do. Again, just as part of our work plan, right? The premise, or, excuse me, is in the next slides and included in your packet, the things that I like to do when I'm doing business visit, when I decide I'm gonna visit a little company is if I'm not intimately familiar with their business model, right? The industry they're in or even their location, I'll try to do some of due diligence, right? Learn a little bit more about them. That way, when I'm going in, it could be more conversational. Right? Not like, oh, I'm here to interview. Can you take out your time? You know, you may be in the middle of the peak operation hours of business. So I'll try to do a little fact finding, see what little I can learn about them. That way, conversation a little bit more warm. So I would invite you, just as a recommendation, as we're preparing to go visit some of these businesses, maybe take a couple of minutes or so, trying when you're gonna stop by there to, um, do some of these things, like you say. See if they've got a website presence, right? If some of you guys are active on social media, take a quick tour and see what, you know, what activity they have or presence on, in that space. Right? Make sure we're familiar with where they're located. Um, and then like, like you said, it'll make the conversation a little bit more meaningful and rich. You know, we've got this form and I've got some physical copies for you. I've got electronic copies. We put one in the package. When I'm out, I'm not out there with this actual armor clip, or I've kind of memorized the script. But essentially, again, what we're trying to do is record and memorialize who you met with. Maybe it's the ship supervisor, maybe it's a manager, maybe it's the actual owner, or maybe it's some of the employees, right? Who we talk with. Hey, how big is your company? How many full-time apartment employees you have? How long have you been open? Right? Now, it's conversational, but I'm really gathering some intelligence that will help inform, you know, our staff in, in this, in this corporation. Right? Um, observation when I'm walking in, okay? It's pretty good or the parking lot maybe is in disrepair or, you know, I'm kind of seeing some signs. I'm, I'm making mental notes to those things. When I'm in the inside, wow, they're really friendly. Soon as I walk in the door, they greeted me, welcome, right? As you get into the conversation, again, a way for you to, if this helps you, keep some notes, but not be so, again, restricted to where you, they feel like you're coming here to interview, right? Really what we want them to do is see you, friendly face. Wow, a member of the board came to check on us. Right? But what you're gonna be taking away is getting that fact finding, excuse me, that comes from the conversation. And again, I mentioned earlier, maybe just to mention those, maybe when I get back in my truck afterwards, I'm thinking, okay, I remember I talked to the manager, blasted, I went, excuse me, cops, I'm just using them as examples. So I make those mental notes. My memory is still relatively good and I'm not driving far. So if I keep it on top of mind, I get back to the office, I'll log it into our new CRM platform or before that on my spreadsheet, I got it, then we can report out. For you all, again, if this helps between the time where you actually do it and then when you come back together as a board meeting, you know, I guess, again, something that will help you remember important. So again, we've got some copies of this or if you wanna take uh, excuse me, your iPads, you'll take in the notes app. But whatever it is, it's just, you know, make sure we're covering those things where we, we understand who we're talking to, who the company is, they, how they live in a business. And mainly like some of the risk factors that sometimes come up during a conversation, right? You ask, you may company, how, how's business or how you doing? Probably just depends on that particular week, maybe that day or that period in time. But do we really know how well they're doing? I think, you know, there may be some tell, tell signs that we could have with them, but the main thing is, is if you guys are making these visits and then how we've set it up is during the is during the board members' report section for our monthly meetings, that would be the opportunity for us to report out. I say us, but for you all, right? To report out, maybe share some stories or important information with us and your peers.
How formal do you want this to be? And the reason I ask, for example, I want to have.
Chard burgers.
Chard burger. Having these conversations, but through a pre-visit, I just wanted to. So do you care how formal we are as long as you get the information?
So I'll say this while I pull up our matrix for this quarter, right? My, my visits end up being fairly informed, informed in the sense that I'm introducing myself, you know, I'm a member of the city, the second economic development.
Pre-visit.
Yeah, okay, let's go back to.
And so I'm saying, I see that.
Go ahead. Yes, I am, I am. I do, I want these to be more conversational, right? These are your neighbors, and these businesses are in the community that we live in, right? And so it's, yes, hey, this is who I am, I'm a member of the corporation. But coming here as an ambassador, really just thank you for being in business, how's it going, right? And we'll see on this slide, I included, if we get into a situation where it's like, okay, maybe I can't answer that question, or I thought this through our code, you don't have to leave a business card, you guys don't have business cards on behalf of corporation. But they can scan that, that's going to go right back to our landing page on our website. They're going to be able to say, okay, this is economic development. I can follow and apply for a permit, right? If I want to learn about design incentive grant, which I just mentioned earlier in the meeting, right? All those things will bring them and drive traffic back to our website, and then obviously they'll be able to contact us directly. All right, did I answer your question, Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Okay, so for this first round of visits.
I'm sorry, I just have a simple question. Since there's already two options for them to go to, and we have one there?
Yeah, it's the same, like. Let's do it, pull out your phone, let's see, let's make sure this works.
Yeah, we can put our report or whatever we're going on the same. We can go to the form or go to the city site.
Yeah, go to the city site, not to the form, to the site. Yeah. Because I don't want them filling out the form. This is, this form is really just as a guide to you to help, whatever you may be, something where you can record something important, right? That you want to retain and share.
So I want to say, as we go to a business and I was like, you know, you know that they could help you with the paving?
Okay.
You're fine. So they did say that they were already aware of the information, they had been informed of the opportunities from the person they purchased the building, so they were well on their way.
Okay, good, good.
I think that would also be important, I don't know, like people, I don't think sometimes understand that you can't just like put a sign up.
There's no ordinance, right? Installation sign.
It's like, I'm going to do all of this, I was like, no, don't take all of that as women's. It's not going to go like you think it's going to go. However. Your application. And so.
If you might have another person in hand, maybe a question for you. Public.
Question, is this something that we can join with regards with the, with the business?
I would say this.
We're doing that with our group now, so it's very similar.
Listen, I would say you don't need to necessarily follow the same script of reporting, like being accountable to us. I would, that thing occurs that anytime a chamber or anyone else wants to increase their visibility and engagement with the local business community, like I don't see any downside to that.
Well, we run into challenges though, like with the ribbon cutting, for example. Like this Empire buffet the other day. Victor mentioned to me when he was in my office that they, you know, talked to y'all about a grand opening. Well, literally the day before, he'll have told me, yeah, I went over there and got some food and I handed, you know, I talked about the ribbon cutting, right? Well, that's good, but who did they talk to? Like the city?
They talked to me.
We brought it to them, you know? And so if we go and do these, these check-ins, which we already do for our members at least, but if we started to expand that reach, we don't know when you did, right? If I go in there and say, hey, how y'all doing, ask you a few questions to get to know a little bit, and then you do it tomorrow, you know, if we're not on the same page, then that is fitting that partnership that we're trying to work towards. So, and I'm not trying to be, you know, difficult, but if you're saying like, we don't need to report to you, we don't need, I feel like we might.
It's what I'm saying, from the staff, the, the business retention activity that is, so myself, Victor, Marcella, Devin, Ms. Lang, she's game for getting out, doing business visits. We report that out, we've got the assistant city, one of the assistant city managers here, we report that out, we, right? So if you follow the city managers weekly update, you'll see the business activity, the visits that we're doing, whether it's business retention, expansion, recruitment activity. So that's what we're tracking. This initiative was an opportunity for our board to kind of piggyback on that again, whether or not always just hearing from staff, they get to hear from some local residents who are serving on their board.
So, so and I, I just don't want it to end up where we have to wait till we checked with that update before we can go out, because we don't want to step on toes or cross market.
I don't think we would feel like that. Yes, that's what I say, the more of that.
I would, I would totally agree. Ideally, we would have the kind of relationship that we would just automatically go out there together. We're not there yet, we're still talking, still coordinating. So let's focus on communication, coordination, talking.
For sure.
And as much as we can possibly go out there together. But if not, then when you get a chance, you go, and when we get a chance, we go. So that, so that, so that the business owners and the business community can know that we're serious about it.
All right. I want to start with this avenue, in the packet, I had your name in two bits, so on record.
Okay.
Apologies, but we got, we got a list to correct it right there.
I have to check on you every two.
So how we approach this matrix? One, I did a cross-section of businesses by industry, by council district, right? And you'll continue to see that cross-section, that mix as we make our way through this. Typically, like in our department, I, I push myself to go to businesses, maybe that I'm not familiar with, corridors that I don't frequent on my way to and from home and work, right? So maybe, you know, you'll see more if you were tracking some of the businesses that I've started going, trying to get more familiar with some of our industrial parks and commercial corridors. Obviously, everyone knows our popular restaurants, right? Places where we spend money and exchange commerce. Here, again, first run, we got a representative cross-section of the city. And so, again, in your packet, you can reference this, we've got addresses, hours of operations, and phone numbers, if you so choose. Again, so we're thinking, okay, I'm going to take a look and see, well, I know we keep this up in 24 hours. You're like, I don't have to worry about business hours, I can go by there.
Tell me what's going on here.
Tell my air, talk to the night auditor. Have an assembly on that. No, sorry, I would do that. But again, that's, that's essentially the playbook we're going to go with to kind of, again, start this new initiative out, it's really, again, an opportunity for us to involve you with some of the, one of our core activities that we do every all year is try to get in front to see what's going on, because, again, I would say this, and I'll give credit to Chair Mr. Harvey, he's also done a couple of ambassador business without being assigned. And you know what, that's brought back some really good intel, right? We've learned about many businesses that haven't popped up on our list, about some, some serious risk factors, for example, that are happening, whether it's that particular branch location or something happening, if it's a multinational corporation. Don't discount the value, right, that you will be bringing to, to our collective efforts by like dividing and conquering and just spreading out and showing this, this local economy, this community that like we're here, you know, if we can, we're interested in helping, and if not more, listening and carrying back information and trying to connect you with resources. Okay. I think that might be it, folks. If not any more questions, I'll turn back over to you, Mr. Harvey.
All righty. Okay, so we are up to seven C, discussion and possible board action on the frequency of regularly scheduled DCEBC meetings and proposed dates fiscal year 2025, 26. Mr. Barre.
Good evening. So this evening, I started the evening by saying, you know, that this is a special meeting and we removed it up because of the upcoming holidays and, you know, a few weeks ago, I got an email requesting your availability for the December meeting and also moving that up. And so with this upcoming holidays, it got me thinking of, of our meeting schedule and maybe the need, the desire to revisit the conversation, or continue for that matter, the conversation about increasing the meeting's frequency. Because here we have two examples where we've had to move the meeting up, we've had to make special arrangements in facilitating a meeting room, hosting, et cetera, and that if we put ourselves in a position where we increase the meeting frequency, we can be a bit more predictable, a bit more transparent about when we meet, where we meet, and consistently see the meeting location, the times, et cetera. So I wanted to take this opportunity to check in with you and see if there is a willingness. I know that the last time we discussed this matter, there was some thoughts about moving the entire meeting to the second and fourth Thursday of every month, if we increase the meeting frequency. Or, and there was also some feedback about just maybe having one new date, but keeping this fourth Monday of every month on the calendar, but maybe looking at maybe having the additional meeting on the second Thursday. So I wanted to check in with the board and really kind of test your interest and see if you want to do it on the second Thursday of every month, or for that matter, if you want to just move all meetings to the second and fourth. In that scenario, there is no conflict. We've already checked with the board's schedule, the reservation of the room, our meetings moving forward would be consistently held in the briefing room. We wouldn't have a situation where we have this evening, this evening is a bit of a new situation that we have three boards that have commissioned a meeting this evening, and some rooms that we normally regularly use are not available, and this was the second one available for us for the meeting.
With the increase, what would be the minimum potential part of that?
You know, with the bylaws, we just talk about excused absences, so if you let us know in advance, it's, it wouldn't be a problem.
But we have, you know, the rocks are hard. It takes four of us to do any actions.
Yes, but moving forward, if I, if we were to have, as I'll describe it, a meeting on the first half of the month and the second half, in a situations like this where we have Thanksgiving week coming, we would meet on the first half of the month, and then for the second meeting, we would just cancel that. And we would publish that meeting schedule throughout the, throughout the whole year and reserve the room for those, for those two days per month. If there is no business to discuss on either of them, we would cancel those meetings. But we would have them set in the calendar. Right now, we have a situation where we have one meeting on the calendar, and if we have to move, we have to call a special meeting, we have to check everyone's availability, we have to check the room, there's a number of things to check moving forward. If we go in this direction, we secure our room, location, time, et cetera. And again, if there is a need to meet on the first half of the meeting of the month, we will meet. If there's only a need to meet on the second half of the meeting, we will meet. If there's, if there's enough business, enough initiatives for us to meet twice a month, then we, we will meet those regularly scheduled meetings per month. Moving forward, this is something that will require city council approval of this meeting schedule. So again, this evening, just kind of wanted to check in with you and see how you want to proceed, given tonight's a perfect example of what we had to do to accommodate the holiday weekend. And in this scenario, we have this type of predicament at least three times a year. We had the same situation, we had the same situation with Memorial Day weekend where we had to move the meeting up one week. Here we have Thanksgiving, we move the meeting one week, and then for the Christmas week, where we're also moving it one weekend, we're looking to have it on December 15th. Ms. Adams.
Oh, yes, it's, it's, this report here says that DCEBC currently meets on the second and fourth Thursdays of each month. Is that, is this?
That might be it. I think there was a proposal.
Yes, it was a proposal.
There was a proposal that I put out there for the board to entertain about moving the meetings to the second and fourth Thursday of every month. At the last, the last time that this was discussed, there was a suggestion to us out of keeping the fourth Monday of every month and maybe looking at having the additional meeting on another day, because there was a conflict with the room and another board meeting on the second, on the second Monday. So there was an issue in keeping eating all the meetings on Monday.
Chamber office is open.
So we could also go in that direction, we could do the second and fourth Monday of every month. The fourth Monday would be at City Hall, and then the second Monday could be at a different location. And we would meet, we would meet the posting requirements, et cetera, that need in order to conduct a proper meeting as we did this evening for this meeting at this location.
So you're calling now for a particular area?
I'm calling to, to test, to really guess, to get, to know desires of the board on the day. The time would remain the same in case, you know, if we, if Mondays appear to work for everyone, then we would just look at having the fourth, excuse me, the second, the second Monday meeting at a different location, because the room that we normally need is not available. So we would make arrangements similar to this evening, where we would have the tripod, and we would record the meeting and make the arrangement as we did this evening. If that is the desire of, of the board. And we, if that is a desire, we would bring this new meeting schedule to a future meeting for formal approval, and then we would bring it before the city council for their final approval on that meeting schedule.
Well. Well, I was going to say, I'm open to it, but I think it just might make it tight schedule. So I would hate to move forward with it and then I'm missing a lot of meetings. But I'm not opposed, because I do understand how much easier it might make it for you all as staff to be able to schedule out our meetings and get things done for the community that much quicker. So I'm definitely open to it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I think I share the same sentiment, so I will have some issues moving forward, especially something about Thursdays, you know.
On Thursdays, especially for sports and different things in there, on Mondays.
And with my work dealing with a lot of these, I have a lot of other meetings in the evenings, so. It may be some issue for me, but just.
We would, moving forward as staff, we would do our best to create a joint of the bulk of the business on the second meeting or keep it to the fourth month. But in the event that we absolutely do, we have that first one. Again, we're just, we're proposing this so we have a bit more predictability. We have, we could just make the necessary room arrangements, posting, and we're not having to find ourselves having to hold the board for availability on a special meeting, you know, with holidays in the midst, that's all.
Anyone have a question or objection to a particular day? Mondays would personally work for me.
I prefer Mondays.
Mondays work better.
Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, so depending on who you talk to, who's in the mission.
In the beginning, are you talking to Monday and Tuesday? They all, they all, they all.
Yes.
We always process it as like Monday or Thursday.
And the only reason we'll start this one, because that's, that appears to be the only date in the week in the board, doesn't come like with the board. But given that the board is open to having the second meeting at an alternative location, we can definitely explore that to keep it Mondays and remove it to a second and fourth Monday schedule. So based on what I'm hearing, that appears to be the consensus, the desire. So based on what I'm hearing, that appears to be the consensus, the desire to keep it to Mondays, uh, explore a meeting on the second Monday and then I would get back to you on the location. It's very possible that it may not be in any of the city facilities, but I would do my best to see if we can have it. If not, I'll look for an alternative location and we will share that with you when we bring the new meeting schedule, uh, to the board to perform approval. Is that okay? I appreciate your feedback and thank you for your assistance with this. That's all I have this evening regarding that matter.
All right, uh, so that gets us to number eight, executive session. Uh, in accordance with the Texas Governor Code, the DCEDC shall convene and propose executive session pursuant to the following sections, section five five hundred seventy-two, which has provisions about the person, plans, lease and value of real property being located in the one hundred and thirty seven, two seventy-seven, stop coping with the code, number three, hundred thousand, ten, space. The DCEDC shall also convene and propose executive session pursuant to the following sections, section five hundred and one, section thirty-seven, two, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations.
session at nine twenty seven. Nine twenty seven and there's no action being taken as a result of items considered under executive session. So if there are no other questions, comments or concerns, I would declare this meeting finished at nine twenty seven. Are we good?
Good.
All right.